Zoom. Hey, recording. All right, so I have 7:35 PM. I'm going to call the order Woodstock's Planning and Zoning Commission Special Meeting for July 2nd, 2020. And I'm going to go through the roll. And for any commissioners, if you're here, just say aye. And I'll just ask anybody who's not a commissioner or staff, just to keep yourself on mute, so we can cut down on the background noises. Joe Adelata?
Present.
Mark Blackburn? Sid Blodgett? Gail Dickinson? Nancy Fraser can't make it tonight. Jeff Gordon, I'm here. Jeff Markcott? Here. David Morse can't make it tonight. Doug Porter, I think, I don't know if he's still away, or if he was. Because I know he told me he wasn't going to be able to make a meeting. Fred Rich? Dwight Reinowitz?
Here.
And Tim Young?
Here.
So I will note for the record that we did make a quorum. The meeting rules and guides, for any of you who have already attended our meetings via Zoom, this is not new to you, but anybody who has not, we are meeting per, as per provisions of Executive Order 7B and 7I, so we're meeting via Zoom. However, the rules of how we conduct our meetings otherwise are still in effect. This is being recorded, so at whatever point, the town will post a link, I think in the meeting minutes, if you wanted to watch it or hear the audio of it. All meeting documents have already been posted, as they're supposed to be up on the town's website. They can be accessible at the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage, if any of you wanted to access them, if you haven't already. As far as designation of alternates, we actually are in need of an alternate, so I will see Dwight Reinowitz. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And you'll do the usual hosting the commission for a party, because we get to seat you at the meeting?
You bet.
Okay. We all look forward to that. My report is very simple, my usual thank yous to all the commissioners for our meetings that we do every, I mean, actually twice a month that we're meeting. Also, the usual thank yous to the town staff and to Attorney Roberts. I know we've been keeping town staff and me busy behind the scenes, prepping and doing a lot of different stuff that needs to be done for the meetings, but the usual shout out to the town staff as well. Do also want to remind commissioners that we do have a meeting on July 16th. The agenda is in the works of being prepared and will be posted next week. And meeting packets will be sent out. Any of you who wants to pick up your meeting packets at Town Hall, speak with Tina, and she can arrange for you to pick it up. I usually swing by on a Thursday evening and pick it up in front of Town Hall, in case any of you are getting your meeting packets. Works, or want to get it, just coordinate with Tina about that. Just be prepared, there may be a lot of additional documents, so it might be another big meeting packet for the 16th. We do have a public hearing on the 16th for the gas station, country store. If any commissioners are unable to attend, can you please let me know? Not now, just because I want to make certain that we have at least a quorum, so we can conduct the business for that. And then, since we all know tomorrow starts the three-day holiday weekend, happy July 4th, everybody. That takes us to Agenda Item 5A. This is a non-residential zoning permit. This is second chance nutrition. Chanice Rodriguez, hope I pronounced that correctly, 283 Route 169 Unit Number 3. This is a new business change from a prior business, Tony Perkins LMT, and going to a shake shop. I will, Tina, I'll ask my usual question, but I know the answer. This is a complete application and fees have been paid.
Yes, this is, fees have been paid, I think, application for two previous business that was in there.
Okay. And anything otherwise?
Can you hear me?
We're sort of hearing you.
Okay, let me try to.
Is there anything otherwise from your staff perspective?
No, it's, everything looks good. I see no problems.
I'll open it up to the applicant, if the applicant is here. Looks like she, you're welcome to speak on your application if you wish. You're not required to, but it is an opportunity if you wish to. And if you do, just let me know, and happy to hear from you. Okay. I'll open it up to the commission.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the application as presented.
There is a motion on the table, is there a second?
Oh, second.
Well, that's Commissioner Young seconded. So the motion by Commissioner Adelata, seconded by Commissioner Young, is to approve the non-residential business permit as presented. Do we have any discussion?
Yes, if I may. Just a reminder for the applicant to review the sign and lighting ordinances that we have for the town. Other than that, no other discussion item.
And I will note for the record that this application does also include for a sign. So it's all bundled in. Okay, does anybody, any other commissioners have any questions? Hearing none, I'll go through the roll. Joe Adelata?
Aye.
Sid Blodgett? Jeff Gordon?
Aye.
Jeff Markcott?
Aye.
Fred Rich?
Aye.
Dwight Reinowitz? Is that an aye, Dwight?
He's muted.
You're muted, Dwight.
You got to unmute. I don't know why he's muted.
Oh, little bit of a problem here, technical difficulty. Yeah, aye.
Okay. And Tim Young?
Aye.
So I take that that so passes, congratulations. Does that mean we get to have shakes at every single one of our Planning and Zoning Commission meetings?
I'll deliver.
Good answer.
You'll take care of that, right, Tina?
Absolutely, I love those shakes.
That's why you're my favorite CEO. And Tina, you'll do whatever magic you do post approval. So congratulations and welcome to the business community here in Woodstock.
Thank you.
The next agenda item, unless there's an objection, I'm going to take Agenda Item 6B, which is an 8-24 review and move it up, just because Agenda Item 6A is likely to take the rest of our meeting and to be nice to the Open Space Land Acquisition and Farmland Preservation Commission Committee. We will move that up without objection, it is done. So right now, we will take up what is listed as Agenda Item 6B. This is an 824 review, in case anybody doesn't know. You're required by state statute to issue a report. Well, actually not required to issue a report, but we have to have an opportunity to issue a report. We can choose to issue no report, we've never actually issued no report. We can issue a favorable report or an unfavorable report, or whatever we want. It's our opportunity. This is relative to that committee's proposal to the town for the purchase of development rights for the Maple Crest Farm that is located on Route 169. And for the record, I will state that it is map 5130 Block 29 Lot 56-1. I don't know, Dawn Adelata, you were here for the committee. Did you want me to show that map up on the screen? I can.
I think that might be helpful to everybody, although, yes, I guess that's, that would be the best way, so everybody can see it.
So let me just quickly call that up here. I have the files on my computer. And then that way, everybody can see the map. Did you need me, Dawn, to first show that little proposal sheet?
No, that was just background for you.
Okay, so let me just get to my files and I will show it up on the screen, so everybody can see. I know all commissioners got the packet anyway. Let's see, this is this meeting, here it is. And let me rotate it correctly. All right, now I gotta share the screen. Here it is. Can everybody? Can people see the map?
Yes.
Yeah, that worked.
Okay. Dawn, if you'd like to, on behalf of your committee, and before you do that, I just want to say thank you to you and your colleagues on that committee, and actually Sid, you're on that as well, I believe, for all the work you do. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're ready for me now, Jeff?
I am, you have the floor for as many hours as you want.
Okay. Dawn Adelata, Chair of the Open Space Land Acquisition and Farmland Preservation Committee, requesting, as Commissioner Gordon has pointed out, an 824 review of the Maple Crest Farm project. The Open Space Farmland Preservation Committee voted at its last regular meeting to recommend to the town that the development rights be purchased on this property. It's approximately 140 acres. It abuts other protected lands. It's situated, it has frontage on 169 and is situated between Roots 169 and the back part of Valley Side Farm, which is a protected parcel. It's owned by the Young family. It's been farmed for as long as people, white people, have been here in Woodstock. It's currently the property, I said that, of the Young family, and they've been farming it for the past at least 10 years. I will be willing to be corrected on that later. The Open Space Fund has the necessary money set aside for this. The property is 80% land, prime soils and lands of state and local importance, so it's good farmland. And it's part of the Valley Side Farm Maple Crest Long-Term Project to keep farming here in town.
Thank you, and I do have to note, Tim Young, I'm assuming you are recusing yourself?
Absolutely.
But we will note that for the record. Does anybody have any, any commissioners have any questions for Dawn? Otherwise, what is the wish of the commission? Either we give a favorable report or an unfavorable report, or choose if no report.
To make a motion that we issue a favorable report on this property?
Is there a second?
I'd like to second that, Jeff.
So a motion made by Commissioner Blodgett, seconded by Commissioner Reinowitz, was that you, Dwight?
That's correct.
Okay. Any further discussion by the commission? Hearing none, I'll go through the roll. Joe Adelata?
Aye.
Sid Blodgett?
Aye.
Jeff Gordon?
Aye.
Jeff Markcott?
Aye.
Fred Rich?
Aye.
And Dwight Reinowitz?
Aye.
I take that, but that passes. So we will send a favorable report to the Board of Selectment. And I know, Dawn, there's other things you guys need to do to go through the usual process before eventually.
We'll be go, we'll go before the Board of Finance and Conservation Commission and the Ag Committee, before the town will have the opportunity to vote on it as a whole. But thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I appreciate your time.
Well, thank you.
Thanks for your hard work, Dawn.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Nice job, Dawn.
Thank you, Dawn.
I just want to note for the record that Commissioner Adelata gave a very strong thank you and good job, so we'll write it in the minutes.
Yes, but no bias or anything.
No, no bias.
No, there wouldn't be, right.
I think I'm muting now, bye.
Good move.
Oh, Joe, I thought she said she was going to mute you, so I'm glad that you're not. The next one is Agenda Item 6A. This is a discussion of zoning regulations about non-conforming uses and structure. This is not a public hearing on this matter, therefore, this is a discussion between the applicant of a special permit and the commission. Because if we're not doing a public hearing, this is not otherwise a venue for the public regarding the application. This is regarding the special permit application, SP 641-06-25. This is Route 169, this is the Rusty Relic mixed use retail store and residential use. And just to remind people, and I did send out a memo dated June 21st on this, we're having this discussion because an item has come up relative to the zoning regulations. And if Attorney Roberts correct me if I get this wrong. The issue is, is that this is a perfect residential house. And structure, and that's non-conforming, I believe, due to the setback for the frontage on Route 169. Because this is a mixed-use special permit application, the issue has come up about what our regulations allow or do not allow relative to a one type of non-conforming use, and then adding in a new non-conforming use, if that makes sense. I think I got that correct. That we did send out in the meeting packet, a copy of the prior zoning regulations. I think the listing on that was 2012. And then we have the current regulations, as they are last amended in 2019, to show the changes that had occurred. I don't know, Rich, is there anything additional from your point of view? Because I know you had commented to us about this, if there was anything else from your point of view, legally looking at this?
No, I think you've summarized it pretty well. I mean, it's non-conforming currently as a residential use. The setback required is 75 feet. The amount provided is three feet, just because of the width of the 169 right-of-way. For the commercial use, these required setbacks would be 60 feet. So the non-conformity would actually be reduced under the proposed new use. And I think the, you know, the relevant regulatory issue is that the prior regulations had a specific provision which permitted change from one use to another in an existing non-conforming structure, as long as the non-conformity was not exacerbated. But that provision was not carried forward into the 2019 regulations. On the flip side, there is nothing in the 2019 regulations that says either way about prohibiting or allowing change of one non-conforming, one use to another in a non-conforming structure. You know, so I think it's basically up to the commission to interpret their own regulations to determine whether the omission of the prior provision was, you know, for lack of a better word, intentional or inadvertent, and whether they would interpret the silence or the absence of any provision in the regulation as allowing continuation of a non-conforming structure with a different use, particularly here where the size of the non-conformity is reduced based on the proposed change in use. Frankly, I would have greater concerns if the change in use were going the other way and the amount of the non-conformity was increasing rather than decreasing. But I think, you know, where we are today is kind of seeking some guidance from the commission as to what they believe the intention of the regulations is for this particular context, given that it is basically silent on the subject.
And I looked back on my notes. I have a massive folder of all the years we went through the zoning regulations, review and update. And I didn't find anything in any of my notes. And I would like to hear what other commissioners think, if they think the same or differently, who were involved back in the day when we redid the zoning regulations. But I found anything that we, I made a note that we purposefully changed it to leave this type of provision out, versus it may have been left out when we were doing a whole bunch of rewording at the time. But I didn't find anything to say that we had a specific discussion to get rid of this provision. And thus why it's not in the current zoning regs. But I don't know if others who were involved in the commission at the time have the same recollection or a different recollection, I just don't have anything specific relative to anything other than it didn't, wasn't in the update at the time.
Yeah, one last thing, and I forgot to mention, is that when you go past the regulations into the chart, it still has the footnote in the chart from the previous regulations directing you to the section of the regulations that permits, you know, the continued use of non-conforming structures, even though that provision itself is no longer found.
Right, and that is noted to make one wonder whether it was inadvertently left out or not. Again, I don't have notes to say otherwise. Sid?
Yeah, so Rich, to summarize, under the old regulations, what the applicant is proposing would have been allowed, or would have been easier to approve it. Under the current regulations, maybe by admission, or maybe based on some discussion, we're silent on it, so that, so what the applicant's proposing gets a little more difficult to approve. Is that it in a nutshell?
Yeah, I mean, the prior regulations specifically allowed it. The current regulations neither allow it nor prohibit it.
Okay.
And again, it's up to us as the commission to interpret our regulations as far as how we go. Okay. I'll recognize the applicant or the applicant's representative. I know John Guskowski, you're here, if there's something you wanted to say, please go ahead. Just identify yourself specifically when you speak, so we can capture it on the audio and video.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity to be included in the discussion this evening. For the record, my name is John Guskowski. I'm a professional planner with CHA Companies, based in stores, Connecticut. On behalf of Jamie and Jason Bosale, the owners of the Rusty Relic and the applicant in this situation, who wish to convert the residential structure and former student housing at 599 Route 169 to be the headquarters of the.
Did we lose you?
Rusty Relic retail store as well as this building. I, did, did you not hear that?
No, you, the whole thing froze, I think we heard part of it, if you don't mind, just.
Okay, I was just doing, again, for the record, John Guskowski, the planner with CHA, on behalf of Jamie and Jason Bosale, the applicants. I had just been doing some throat clearing about the application itself. But the crux of the matter is basically, as Attorney Roberts stated it, I would have a minor correction, just for the record of you, Mr. Chairman. You referred to the use, the existing and proposed use as non-conforming. I would just like to state that both the current use of residential and the proposed use of retail with residential are both perfectly allowable by the zoning regulations. The latter by special permit, which is what the applicants are seeking. It is the structure that is non-conforming, and as Attorney Roberts indicated, the conversion of residential to commercial requires a smaller front yard setback. Therefore, this proposal would be reducing the non-conformity. And as, it is, it is my understanding that as the regulation is silent on this issue, and so it is a matter of interpretation, and it is the authority, and in fact, the responsibility of the Planning and Zoning Commission to fairly interpret the regulations based on what they believe the intent is. I think it's entirely within your authority, and I would hope your intent to note that the prior allowance of this sort of conversion was perfectly allowable and should be allowed to proceed with your consensus. So I appreciate the time, I appreciate the deliberations. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll open it up to additional commissioners, what do people think? I'll state my opinion, having looked through, having been involved in the prior zoning regulation changes at that time, and looking through the wording prior and the wording now. My interpretation would be that it is, that I believe that this is allowable under our current regulations, and thus, the special permit application could move forward for a public hearing. But that's just my own opinion. I'll open it up to what others commissioners think, or what, any other questions or comments from other commissioners? Again, it is up to us to interpret the regulations and decide. Sid?
Jeff, I'm sorry, could you, could you explain again why you think this is allowable under the current regulations?
It was allowed before, I don't see that there was anything specific, that it was the intent of the commission to not allow this type of item to be reviewed via a special permit, and then if the commission so decided to approve a special permit, I think it would be different if the commission specifically did not want this, and thus purposefully removed it. I haven't heard anything or seen anything, and again, I went back through all the different drafts that I had kept copies of in my notes at the time. I didn't see anything that the commission, from my perspective, purposefully wanted to remove this item. And as Attorney Roberts mentioned, there still was a footnote left in another page on the regulations referring to this, even though the wording wasn't there. So I'm under the impression this was inadvertently left off when we did some of the wordsmithing and redid some of the language. And thus, I think interpreting our current regulations, it would allow it, especially and additionally, because we don't have any wording that specifically prohibits it. That's my opinion, but I'm interested in what the rest of the commission has to say, and certainly whichever way the commission, you know, interprets the regulations, we'll move forward with.
So regardless of intent, regardless of the prior regulations, could this application, as it stands now with the current regs, be considered and eventually approved? Or are we like roadblocked and can't even consider this application?
I think as Attorney Roberts had told us, that we could, if we interpret how we interpret our regulations. Is that correct, Rich? We could decide favorable or unfavorable relative to if this special permit application can move forward, if we feel that it does meet the regulation, and in our interpretation, it can move forward. If we feel it doesn't meet the regulation, then I guess one has to seek a variance beforehand, but that's the ZVA, we don't issue variances. But again.
I think exactly it, I mean, it's, you know, it's sitting here, and this is, as far as I know, this is the only open issue as to whether, you know, whether there's, whether there's any concern about, you know, the change in use within the non-conforming structure. And, you know, you get basically no guidance from your own regulations, even if you, even if you leave aside the fact that the prior set of regulations specifically permitted it. If you were coming into this cold with a blank slate today, frankly, I think you would be having the same analysis. You know, the regulations are silent on it. Do we think that our regulations allow this or prohibit it? And if the regulations prohibit a change in use within a non-conforming structure, as the chairman pointed out, their preliminary step would be to go get a, you know, a variance of the regulations, you know, to allow them to proceed with the special permit application within the non-conforming structure.
Any other commissioners, comments, thoughts, Joe?
Yes, thanks, Jeff. Just a couple of things, this is an interesting case brought to our attention, and one I want to thank you for sending the copies of the regulations in the packet that make it a little easier to see which areas you were referring to. And particularly in the current regulations, there is a section that indicates that illegally existing non-conforming use may be changed to a conforming use, provided a zoning permit or a special permit has been issued. And since we're working for a special permit on this application, it sounds like it's a reasonable approach for our commission. it sounds like it's a reasonable approach for our commission to proceed with consideration of using this residential use changed to essentially a mixed use. But that brought another question to my mind, as I was looking through our regulations for anything describing mixed use. And while it might be there, I couldn't see anything in our definitions or regulations that talk about mixed use. And again, I'm comfortable with the application as it presented and supportive of it, but just don't see that as defined in our regulations for mixed use of buildings and structures. So I think this application brings to our attention some issues the commission may have to address more clearly in future meetings. But if this discussion is leading to where this commission might decide on whether to accept the application or not, I'd certainly be in favor of it, because there's the absence of prohibition can be taken as allowance. And I'm certain, certainly comfortable with allowing this to proceed to a public hearing. But it does raise some questions that I think we as a commission may have to address at later meetings.
And one of the things, Joe, to follow up on that, on our strategic plan, which we still have, of different items for us to go through, further clarifying and looking into more detail about various mixed uses is actually still on our list of things to do. We had put it on the list some time ago, and it still is on the list. And so I agree, it is some things we are going to need to further look into and clarify various things on, so.
If I can ask another question, maybe directly to Attorney Roberts about a mixed use application where we don't real, we, our regulations don't spell out anything for mixed use? Or do we, as a commission, have the authority to approve something that's neither described positively or negatively in our regulations?
I think you should probably view it as an application for a commercial use with kind of an ancillary residential use, in the absence of any clear definition of what a mixed use is.
Okay.
Because my understanding is that the application is primarily commercial with, you know, residents upstairs in the front house.
Yes.
And we actually, in the regulations, do have one thing that talks about or touches upon mixed use. This is in Article 6. It gets into nonresidential uses when we talk about standards. And it does start talking about relative to standards for nonresidential buildings. But then it also talks about a single-family residential dwelling, attached, detached, or mixed-use building, maybe located on a parcel with a nonresidential use. So we do actually get into some comments in the regulations about mixed use, but that's really all there is. And because of that, I think, in my book, it's on page 56. I think it's in the, I don't know if it was in what went out to everybody. Oh, no, it's page 57 went out. Well, once it's on 57. Yeah, no, 56 didn't go, I think.
I also, I also looked in the section of definitions for mixed use to see if we had. And actually, we don't have anything under the letter M for definitions, so.
And I actually pulled my file on mixed uses, which I have. And previously, we noted a whole bunch of things, such as definitions, such as clarifying more regulations about mixed use. And that's why it then ended up on our to-do list to further clarify. But there is a touching point in the regulation. I think it was in the meeting packet that got sent out. I think it's on page, I think it ends up being page 57 in the copy that was sent out, which is a little different page number than my book, where it does touch upon mixed-use buildings. But that's kind of where it is, and doesn't get into a lot more detail. But at least there's some touching point about mixed use.
Boy, that's a real small comment, isn't it, in the end regulation? But yeah, you see it now on page 57.
It is. It went back a number of years, and that actually goes back to, what year did we approve the zoning regulations? 2015 was initially that big review and changes. We did actually have comment, even back then, about wanting to get more into mixed use at a later point.
Right, right.
That's why, when we came across something like this, we had said, gee, we need to look more into it.
Well, Jeff, we may need a third meeting a month to start talking about these strategic plans.
I doubt it.
Any other commissioners have any comments?
Commissioner Rich, I've probably been on the committee as long as anybody that's sitting there tonight. And for many weeks, we discussed what is not allowable in Woodstock. We went through list after list after list of what we didn't want in town. And this is not on the list. So as far as I'm concerned, if it's not on the list, it's, you can have it. Might be too simple a way of looking at it, but we did not put it on the list, and you are right. We were going to go back and talk about mixed uses. We've been going to do that for the last 10 years, actually. Haven't got there yet, but maybe someday, some of these folks will. But as far as I'm concerned, it sounds like a good idea to use that building for something that is worthwhile. It's, I'd rather say it used for that than low-income housing or something. Be honest with you.
So as far as for the zoning regulations, Fred, you're saying that you feel that this interpreting our regulations would allow us to take up the special permit further and then go accordingly?
I do.
Any other commissioners who wished to weigh in? You know, Jeff, Dwight, Tim? Anything from your viewpoint? We will have to make a decision tonight.
I was just wondering, in regard to the historic district, if it has any significance there? That was my only thing, Mr. Chairman.
We can't bring that up for tonight. That has to be brought up relative to the public hearing. The matter at hand has nothing to do with the historic district. It just has to do with our regulations, which our regulations would be townwide, especially this would be in the community district. So I have to say, let's leave any discussion of the historic district to a public hearing, because that's where we have to bring it up.
Okay, thank you.
Was there anything, Dwight, from your perspective? I don't want to put the other commissioners on the spot, but I want to make certain all commissioners have a chance to ask questions and comments.
I'm pretty much in an agreement with what's been spoken about tonight. It makes sense, it's logical.
Okay. Tim, Jeff?
Yeah, I agree. It's a functional use. I kind of concur with what Fred said. It's better than low-income housing.
Jeff, anything from your perspective that you wanted to let us know about, or any questions?
I'm in agreement with everyone else. I think that although it's way before my time on the commission, I see there is no wording that says we can't do it. I think it is a good idea to move forward.
Okay.
Jeff, did I hear you say we needed to make a decision on this, or just discuss?
No, we do. The reason is that it's a process issue, because if we were to say, yes, we interpret our regulations to allow this, then what we would do, well, it would have to be at our, we can do that at our business meeting coming up. We would then need to schedule a public hearing. If we said, no, our interpretation is we do not allow this type of issue, then the special permit is not in compliance. And then a variance would have to be sought first from the zoning board of appeals. So we do need to make a decision, and that's why, you know, we decided to hold on scheduling a public hearing and go ahead and review this and decide, so we know the process. And I guess, Rich, if I can ask you a process question, the commission should take a vote as far as its interpretation, so it's clear on the record? Or?
Probably.
Because then that gets into the public hearing, because of course, we need to make certain all applications are compliant with all provision of zoning regulations. So we just, we'll have to decide which way we wish to go. Is there any further discussion on this? Any further questions from the commission? Otherwise, what is the will of the commission?
I'd make a motion, Jeff, to accept the interpretation of allowing the special permit to proceed to a public hearing for this application.
I second it.
And who was that, who seconded? Was that you, Tim?
Yes.
Okay, so motion by Commissioner Adoletta, seconded by Commissioner Young. And let me just make certain I got this correct, Joe. To accept the, really be the commission's interpretation of the zoning regulations regarding the special permit?
Yes, to allow the special permit to proceed to public hearing.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Let me just write this down, so I can get the wording to... Okay, I'll go through the roll. Joe Adoletta?
Aye.
Sid Blodgett? Jeff Gordon?
Aye.
Jeff Markhat?
Aye.
Fred Rich?
Aye.
Dwight Reinowitz?
Aye.
And Tim Young?
Aye.
That so passes. And then what we'll do is, at our business meeting, we can take up the scheduling of a public hearing, and then we'll go accordingly. We have the decision on the record at this time, then. Thank you, and thank you, John, for coming to the meeting representing the applicants.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And just to get to Fred's point, as far as when to take up mixed use, Fred, I think we can endeavor to take it before you reach your 25th anniversary. I know, that's a goal of yours.
Yep.
It is, huh?
I think it's 20 or 25, you get that special award from the Connecticut Federation of
Yeah, right.
So, hang in there, Fred, you'll get that award.
I got more goals than that in life.
That takes us to Agenda Item 7, which is Commissioner Rich's moment to shine.
Move it, John.
Does someone wish to join him to second it?
Second it.
That was Tim. So, motion by Commissioner Rich, seconded by Commissioner Young, to adjourn the meeting. I'll go through the roll, although I think I already know the results.
Aye.
Blodgett?
Aye.
Jeff Gordon?
Aye.
Jeff Markhat?
Aye.
Fred Rich?
Aye.
Dwight Reinowitz, do you say aye or dare to oppose them?
Aye.
And Tim Young?
Aye.
So I will note that we are duly adjourned at 8:19 PM. Thank you, everybody, have a good evening.
Thank you, Jeff. Take care, everybody, good weekend.
Happy for us. Same to you, Joe.
Thank you.
Let me shut
Happy Independence Day.
It is, and don't forget that even though we're not having the usual July 4 jamboree, I think it's the, is it the American Legion, or is having that their parade anyway through part of town and to have a ceremony? So if you, they have it posted on Facebook about what route they're going to be taking. So at least there's going to be something that's going to happen on July 4 with the parade, so.
Have a good weekend.